Thumbs up to begin the presentation and video.
Thank you, Board. It's my pleasure to share with you tonight the You Matter video that was produced for the event last Saturday evening at the high school. You Matter is one of those efforts that really reflects the heart of our district, helping students develop a genuine sense of belonging. The event was very well attended last Saturday night, full of energy, and it was clear that our students and staff took pride in being a part of it. I know that you'll enjoy this video.
What makes me happy is when I get to go outside and play with my cat because she just makes me feel good.
When I think about my sister.
I like answering right questions, doing a little bit of math or like playing, and like helping other people.
Going on a trip to my family.
Donuts, dogs, food in Mason, and seeing other people, being kind to other people.
Gymnastics.
Just playing with my friends and kind of just having fun with my kids.
Breathing.
What's an activity that makes you happy? What do you like to go do?
Playing cards.
I just go get a drink and just sit down, leaving myself.
I kind of go to my room sometimes.
Talk to my teacher.
I might take four deep breaths.
I can just breathe in and breathe out and just make sure I'm okay because I don't want to get over worried or over scared or anything.
Usually my friends and my brother.
My mom and my dad.
My counselor and my teachers and like my mom and dad.
Usually they're not talking to anybody or socializing.
When at recess sometimes, they're just sitting on the bench and they have their head between their knees and they're just sad.
And somebody has an upside down smile.
I can play with them.
I say you can do it if they can't do something.
I pick their hand up and then I say what's going on.
I go ask what they like to do, what happened, and like see what I can help them with if they like want to play, like anything they want or if they want to go to the nurse or need a teacher, I'll go grab something.
I make them try to laugh and help them think of things that make them happy.
Learning how to ride a bike. It was one of my hardest tricks.
Working like with my mates at gymnastics and like soccer tournaments.
The bus.
The bus? What about the bus?
It goes, it plays music.
You like that the bus plays music?
I like a lot of things, like I'm good at soccer. It's my dream to be a good soccer guy and I'm good at math.
When I finally learned to ride my bike.
Getting tested for leap and getting third in rookie state in wrestling.
It's with my sister, so I couldn't do flip, but I know how to.
And you did a flip?
That I'm great at, at stuff.
I can do it.
So to like sometimes when I'm encouraging myself, I'll say, you got this, Evie, don't screw up. Thank you.
I am smart and brave.
That I can do it. I believe in myself. I can do good things and hard stuff.
I'm beautiful. I can do hard things and nothing will stop me.
That was a video that ran during the You Matter night last Saturday night. We had over 100 students participate. It's all about being encouraging to themselves and to each other, and it was a great, great event. And we're fortunate to have a school district that throws events like that for kids. So thank you to our team and all of our parent volunteers who participated in that event.
Okay, on to the Raypack East Middle School presentation.
Yes, next we'll hear from Dr. Matt Shouman, Principal of Raypack East Middle School. And I see several students. We're looking forward to that. Dr. Shouman will be presenting on some of the great things happening at East this year. So Dr. Shouman, it's all yours.
All right, well, first I'm a little disappointed that our whole gallery left. I thought they were here for us, but we do need to go to a previous presentation. But thank you for having us and we're excited to kind of talk about what makes Raypack East unique and exciting and what I hope bring kids to school every day. That's the one. Yeah, there we go. Thank you. All right, so one thing that is very unique at Raypack East Middle School is that we have introduced the house system, which we started last school year as I came into the building as the principal. And something that I swore I would never talk about again, but here we are. Coming out of the pandemic, we recognized that students needed something different and they needed a sense of belonging. And school, as much as being about the academics and about all of the things that students learn, it's about the experience. Unfortunately, we're seeing a downward trend in student performance. Some of that performance we're still trying to overcome. We were finding life skill gaps. You know, students were not being able to necessarily perform at the next level. Behavior regulation, mental health concerns, kind of an us versus them mentality, meaning students versus teachers and just a lot of coarseness there that we wanted to be able to work through. And so we started looking at ways that we could get students more involved in the school setting and really improve the climate of what we were doing. And so we started looking at the Ron Clark Academy out of Atlanta. And it was designed to provide kind of an innovative and rigorous middle school experience with high expectations, high engagement, high levels of discipline for students and responsibility, addressing kind of that middle school period very uniquely because as we know, it is such a unique time when students are changing rapidly. We see more cognitive development in that three-year period really than any other time in their life. So just a lot of changes that they have to go through. So coming into East Middle, and this is really something I had started in a previous school, we modeled it kind of after the Ron Clark system where we focused really on behavior, academics, and attendance, and building a sense of community and belonging for our students. Teamwork between students and teachers, creating those opportunities for them really to view each other as collaborative partners in the educational setting and really enjoying one another. Creating mentorship opportunities for our seventh and eighth graders and then developing a program to meet the kind of diverse needs of our middle school learners. So how we did that and how we kind of tied it all together, keeping students, you know, we really believed in kind of three key fundamental things at the middle school level. Students need access to grade-level curriculum and access to engage in material in a meaningful way. Students should have consistent predictable routines that create a safe environment where they can learn and enjoy themselves. And then students have to have opportunities to be involved and create connections to school that are outside just the academic rigors of every day. So we built our strategic goals around that. Our academic goals of 70% or higher in all classes for students, attendance of 90% or higher, no ISS, OSS, or detentions, and then students being actively involved in at least one extracurricular activity or club. And so in this house system, all of their house points are built upon these goals and students can earn points toward their house system. So up here I've put a chart showing how the eight houses of teachers and student groups, and these are multi-grade houses where we do build in those opportunities for mentorships. And one thing we've really seen this year and a lot of the teachers, I guess it's somewhat perceptual data, but our older teachers are really seeing those eighth graders and seventh graders really take the sixth graders under their wing and really just bring them in as family and make that transition to middle school that much easier. So you can look up to the chart and see how those points are dedicated. We put a lot on the grades and attendance, but we also, you know, we really push participation spirit, teacher points, and the house competitions. Some of the other benefits, students have monthly incentives that are all tied into the house system. So students who earn 70% or higher in all their classes, 90% attendance for the month, and no ISS or OSS qualify for a monthly incentive. We have rallies each trister. And any student who earns 70% or higher in all of their classes are eligible to participate in the competitions. We do view that as definitely a family affair. So every student comes, whether their grades meet the requirements or not, but to be able to participate in the competitions, they do have to meet those grade requirements. And then any students and looking at both an individual accountability as well as the team aspect of it, members of the winning house qualify for a grand prize, which this year is going to be to Urban Air, so we're really excited about that. And then any student earning all of the monthly incentives can qualify as an individual. So it creates kind of really all of those things that we're looking for students to be, that they're individually accountable and responsible, but also that they can be part of a team because as we know, sometimes you got to pick up your teammates when they're down. So we definitely want to build that type of character in our students as well. So not that previous districts really matter, but just kind of building that philosophy along the way and why I thought it was so important to bring when I came to Raypack was we saw our discipline halved within a school year in Raytown. Within the first implementation year, 45% of our entire body at EMS qualified for the main event trip, which is absolutely incredible when you look at the rigors of the qualification criteria. And then so far this year, our trister one has produced some very promising results. We have the highest attendance rate that we've had in three years for at least the first trister of school. I hope we can maintain that and even grow that. Our lowest discipline rate also in three years at this point in the school year. And at this point, the third highest academic achievement in at least the two years that I've been here. So really excited about some of the outcomes of that, but I also want you to have the opportunity to hear from our students and how it impacts them. So if Aria, Laney, and Parker can come up, they are going to talk about it. And also StuCo is, they're like my right hand in terms of planning the rallies. So they're going to speak on the student portion of it.
We're going to talk to you guys about how the rallies have impacted our students from a student view.
Okay, a rally takes place every single trister. At the rallies, we play games like dodgeball, musical chairs, just things that like StuCo would do, but dodgeball is kind of a Dr. Shouman thing. We like to talk about each other's successes there and we really get competitive and hype each other up. I think out of the all three years that I've been in this school personally, the house system definitely hypes us up way more than how they used to. I think the rallies bring joy and uniqueness to our school as the houses make us stand out since like I don't think I've ever heard of a school having it. So, yeah.
So we asked a handful of students and staff questions about the rallies, not only like if you have positive feelings about it or negative feelings about it. It was mainly positive, but this is that video.
You're doing great.
Oh, Ms. Young. That's our head of student council. Yeah, because we beat South. We beat South, actually.
We did.
Whatever Mr. Kaufman wants, we'll get him, girls.
Yeah.
We'll get him some stickers. Okay, we might have to just tell them about the video. Carefully, it's not working. There we go.
I feel like it's more organized class because we actually have like our own spaces and stuff and like we just like stay wherever.
I love the rallies. I love the house system. I think it's so much fun that we each kind of have a house family and that we've gotten to create our own flags that hang above us at the rallies. I love that.
The rallies are good. People have fun at school because it gives people a voice.
I love the rallies. The first rally we did, I was blown away. I talked to a lot of teachers about it and how it really felt like community and the kids were excited and I felt pulled into the community as a new teacher. It was fun, like setting up the games and actually being a part of it. Besides, for elementary school, we were kind of in the stands.
I think it was really fun. There was just so much energy and a lot of hustle. Just a lot of hustle hours.
I think they are a controlled chaos that seems to be fun for the kids. I think the staff has a lot of fun and then with the music and watching the kids have fun.
Yes, I think that they're very fun and it gives you something to like think about, like and not just be dreading the day.
The rallies are really fun. Like everybody jumping and there's music playing. It's just like a good, it's just a good time to end the school day. I would hope that we can do this rally thing in high school too, like more fun wise because it's fun to see the talents and it's just a fun way to do stuff.
There is nothing like hearing that roar from the students when their house wins or when it's down to the final battle.
We love the rallies.
Sorry, that was kind of hard to hear.
To participate in the rallies, you have to meet a lot of the expectations. So then you can actually participate in the games that student council provides. There's a lot of students that are eligible for to participate in the rallies more than the past years, and we've seen an improvement in that.
In elements of journalism, we decided to do hype videos for the rallies and here's one of them. Sorry.
That was all just from one rally. Like that was so much hype. It was just one rally. It was crazy.
It was from last year.
Yeah. You would think it's just a couple arrows, but no. Okay, for recognition in the rallies, Dr. Shouman, I feel like he really does a really good job of including everybody that like deserves their name to be said. And there are a lot of people at our PEMS that do do the right things, even if some might not be making all the best choices. We really do try to talk about the ones that are good kids, I guess. Like for, you get called out if you do a sport. So cheerleading, we all turn cheerleaders. Or basketball or something, you get to be recognized for the stuff that you do. And then also grades and attendance, having what he talked about, the 70% or higher and the 90% attendance. And the best of all, my favorite part of the rally is the MVPs of the house. There's five MVPs for each house per rally that we have every trister. And when you're MVP, that means you're meeting all that criteria and you get a reward along with recognition that you deserve.
Our point of views of the rallies, I think I do really, really like the rallies. I do think they could be a little bit better managed. I think that it's also because I kind of know how they're supposed to go because since we're in StuCo, we get the schedule, we plan the games out. Like we do all these things and as someone who does StuCo, whenever I'm trying to like explain how the game goes and then everybody's just like strung out in chaos, I'm like, okay. Yeah, but I do think that it puts a positive impact on students to just like get better grades and just not be as bad as they usually are.
I really liked the rallies. I love seeing everyone cheering and like in stands, jumping up. For cheer, we perform at the rallies and last year we did not get to as much in the previous years because of, but now with the house system, we are able to perform at everyone and be included in it more.
I love watching, especially like my peers get involved in the rallies and get hypey. Like you would, you could walk in and you can just see all of like the joy and the energy that it brings. Everybody has a smile on their face. There's not one person like sitting down. We're all like up and cheering and chanting and it's, I came from a school in sixth grade that we never even had regular pep rallies and it was just, it was very boring. Nobody had very much spirit at all. And I feel like that's just completely different here. All the students are always decked out in their houses' colors for their rallies and they're getting loud for their house. And it's just really nice to see all the students get involved and have a really good time, even though it could very much appear chaotic. It is an enjoyable time and it's just kids having fun. I feel like we manage it as well as we can because they are middle school students in it. Sometimes it is a little bit difficult, but I feel like we do the best. I feel like we do a really good job considering we're middle school students.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shouman and the rest of the team. That was very, we love to see what's going on and anytime students come up and say they have joy and fun at school, then we know you're doing your job. So thank you very much. Now on to the consent items. I need a motion to approve the consent items listed.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. On to information items. First up is Sharp Focus with Mr. Craig Kirking.
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to share with you guys the second version of the Sharp Focus, the strategic highlights at Raypack this month. For this month, what we're going to look at is we're going to be looking at the NWA MAP Growth Scores. All right, first of all, there are many ways to score exams. What I would like to focus on today is how we did on the beginning of year, fall 2025, 2026, RIT for the NWEA. Now, when you think about RIT, that's usually not a common verb. I mean, we send home parent reports, so it's kind of something that we're starting to talk about. But RIT is just a different way that NWA MAP Growth Scores. If we talked about ACT, everyone knows that trying to get to that magic 36 and you know, if you're above a 20 or a 25, where you look at those scores. Same thing with AP. If we're talking about an AP test, anything from a one through five is a good score and you're looking at all those pieces. NWEA has their own different version of scoring, but it's very similar to all those other pieces where we start in one place and we have another. And we're going to get into the piece of that here in a second. But what I really want to start with, before we get into how we did as a school and as a district, how are we sitting and what does a RIT do for us? And basically, not only what does it do for us, what does it show us? So on this very first slide, I want you to imagine a simple ladder. Each RIT score is going to tell us exactly what rung those kids are standing on. It's not about passing or failing. It's this ladder that would sit and be like, where are our kids at? Where are they? Not based on age, because age and level aren't really the piece here. It's really about where our kids are ready to learn. So as you see that this illustration where we have kids of different ages kind of all over the place, each rung is their individual RIT score. And that's kind of how that sits with almost all testing aspects. Now, when you think about that's where RIT score is, is telling us where they are, then the next question is, well, how do we use RIT? Using RIT is basically like a GPS for learning. You know, teachers are going to know exactly where a student is starting from. And that's a huge piece of this. You know, we test the NWA MAP Growth three times per year. So it, not only does it tell us where our kids are, it also tells us how are they progressing? How are they growing? What are they learning? And how are we moving forward in that academic journey, both in math and ELA through multiple domains? And that's a big piece of this. So knowing that that RIT score is like that ladder, where our kids are, and the teachers can see that and be able to differentiate instruction and really kind of tailor what does a kid need to move forward within their journey. Those are the pieces of what makes RIT important and how valuable it is to the education world that we live in. So let's get into the numbers of what they mean. First of all, RIT is somewhere between 100 and 300. So you're going to see a score between 100 and 300 for all of our kids' RIT scores. Again, age and level really aren't the big piece here. It's where everybody is. RIT scores will increase as the kids move forward. But with that being said, the higher the kids go, the RIT scores don't increase as much because again, a RIT score really talks about the complexity of what they're ready to learn. Kindergarten has a lot of things to grow and move forward with, so they are going to be able to show a lot more growth. Where when you get into those upper levels, while the growth is still there, they already have a lot of those complex processes down. So it's again, not necessarily the grade level, but what that kid is ready to learn is the whole basis of RIT. And one thing to note that's important here is they're on an equal interval scale. And what that truly means is it's not going to change if they are in a different grade. It's always going to be between 100 and 300 and that score will keep following them, moving ever so slightly as they grow academically. So here's the exciting part that I'm really ready to show you guys. This very first table that I'm going to show you. Perfect. You're going to look at two columns there. I want you to look at the green and the pink columns first. That green column is the National NWA Reading Norms. This is where the, everybody that took this test, and we're talking millions of kids, when they took this test, this is their RIT average of where the norm is going to be laid. In yellow, in far as, yellow for the first one is reading and the next one is math. You will look to see how did the Raypack kid score on this? Look up and down that entire list. Here's what you're going to notice. Our kids in both math and ELA were higher in every single grade level than the national average. That's huge. What a massive accomplishment. This shows you how successful our kids are right out of the gate. So when I look at these norms... So when I look at these norms and I see that we are above in all areas, again, it's still part of our journey. It shows us what we are ready to learn and how we can still move them. But what a successful start to this school year. Now this next slide, what I tried to do is break this apart into a couple of different ways. This next slide is how are our new kids doing? See if I can get back to that one. So what I want you to notice here, again, the green and the pink on this, the fall norms for both math and ELA, which are our national norms, this is again, not going to change. But what will change is if you're new to RayPEC, in other words, we do not have a score for you last year, how did you guys score on this? And here's what you're going to notice in looking at this. In ELA, more than half of the average RIT scores are equal to or less than the national RIT. In math, more than seventy-five percent of the average RIT scores are equal to or less than the national RIT. So that's going to tell you a little bit of a different story between all of our kids versus new. So if we talk about all and new, then obviously we're going to talk about who are our kids that have returned? And where are those kids that have been in RayPEC for at least one plus years? And again, you're going to notice the exact same thing that we saw on that very first slide. In every single grade, in both math and ELA, all of our returners that have been here one year or longer are higher than the national average up and down the entire chart. So for this month, what I really would like to discuss, because we talked about this last time, what is our grow and where is our glow? Well, this year, it's kind of the same one. When I talk about a glow, like I said earlier, we are so proud of the start that we had for our twenty-five, twenty-six. Every single place, we are surpassing national benchmarks, K-12 across the district. That glow is also part of our grow though. Because when we're looking at this, you know, we have, we welcome a lot of students into the RayPEC School District family. And as they arrive, we notice that some of them are showing academic gaps. So this is where we as a district need to work on a small piece. We need to work on that journey that I talked about earlier. We need to look at the GPS system that is in place because of RIT scores, because it's going to give us that exact place where those kids can grow. And we're committed to that. So every student deserves to thrive. And truly, we are going to push support and our commitment is to uplift them to reach their full potential. Those are our board highlights as far as the grow and glow. What questions do you guys have about RIT scores and how these tables were set up?
Just another piece of the puzzle for us to look at the things. And I love how you've given it to us to highlight where we are in the norms versus where we are. So again, a huge, you know, thing to our teachers that we are doing very well because we know that test is immediate answers and can be used to continue to push, push the kids. So it was very good slicing and dicing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
As a summary, board, this is the kind of, of analysis that we are now able to engage in. I want to thank you for your investment in that particular part of our Academic Services Department. Because I think our teachers are going to get better data than ever before about how to improve student learning. And that's exactly what we're all about. So Craig, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Can we put this information on like our webpage? We were talking about the social media earlier and just, you know, to get this type of information out.
I think some of that would be part of our SRSN dashboard. We do show a lot of those pieces on how we, we grow throughout the year and all those different things within that SRSN piece. As far as showing and kind of celebrating where we are, I know a lot of that starts in the classroom with teachers celebrating those kids and then working on the commitment to show the kids so that they can take ownership of that growth. They know exactly where they are. They know where those norms are. And then they're able to push forward and say, well, I can't wait for the next test to show how much I've grown. And again, as we're taking more assessments like this, three per year, having the kids take ownership and then telling their parents like, look how much I've grown. That's going to be a, a ground roots effort that's really going to light the community and be proud of the, the growth that's here. And it's going to be able to show them in a much better light. It's exciting stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. On to guidance and counseling program review. Dr. McKinney.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Dr. Sligle and the board for allowing me to provide an overview of RayPEC's counseling program and the wonderful things our counselors are doing. It's been a pleasure getting to know and work with them. And I know I speak for all of Academic Services when I say how proud we are of these professionals and the many things that they've accomplished and will continue to accomplish throughout this school year. On this slide, you see what it's all about. Happy students, working with caring, engaged educators. Starting from the top and going clockwise, you have students at Peculiar Elementary, they're riding the waves of emotions. Kindergarten students are working with their feeling buddies. That's a curriculum that's part of conscious discipline. A student at Peculiar Elementary working on a feelings puzzle. And high school counselor Rebecca Williams is helping a student with post-career planning using SchoolLinks. In preparing this evening's program review, these individuals were instrumental. And special thanks to Chief Academic Officer Dr. Barr for her leadership and commitment to RayPEC counselors and their important work. And to my colleagues with me tonight, Dr. Hoffman, Dr. Bolt. The counselors listed here were a huge help as we assembled this year's review. And so I would like to thank them for their hard work and their commitment to the district and the students within it. The RayPEC Counseling Department is comprised of eighteen counselors, seven at the elementary level, four at the middle school levels, two at the ninth grade center, one at the Success in RayPEC Academies, and four at RayPEC High School, which includes a post-secondary and A-plus advisor. With their unique skills and qualifications, it's no surprise that school counselors serve as the hub for students' academic, career, and personal social development. As you can see, they provide a wide range of supports to students and families around academics, behavior, post-secondary planning, and physical and emotional well-being. I really want to highlight one key impact that's shown here. One of the most important things that all RayPEC counselors do is facilitate the district's annual SOS screener. This is an evidence-based suicide prevention screener conducted for students in grade six through twelve each school year. The main focus of SOS is to teach students how to recognize signs of depression and suicide and access help, not just for themselves, but for a friend. While it is a tremendous undertaking under the leadership of our MTSS Coordinator Allison Scott and her team, it stands as a shining example of the value RayPEC places on the well-being of our students and the sense of commitment our district has towards our families and the greater Raymore Peculiar community. On this side, you'll see the goals counselors work to achieve by the spring of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Under goal one, in March of this year, the tool used to self-assess counseling programs, the Internal Improvement Review, or IIR, was replaced by the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education with a new tool, the Missouri Comprehensive School Counseling Program Evaluation, or the CSCPE. There has to be an acronym. We're in education. Both tools serve the same purpose, helping counselors assess their work in areas such as the Missouri Counseling Curriculum, individual student planning, responsive services, and program resources. The new tool, however, includes updated K through twelve counseling standards and greater alignment with student outcomes and accountability. This year, all RayPEC counselors will self-assess using the Comprehensive School Counseling Program Evaluation and establish a new baseline. A new goal tied to that transition appears on the next slide. Regarding goal number two, there's nuance in why this goal wasn't fully met. As a district and specifically within our multi-tiered system of supports, we have evolved our evidence-based practices to extend beyond traditional skills-based groups. While skills-based counseling groups remain one way, counselors implement evidence-based practices, we now use additional strategies to better meet students' changing needs, including check-in, connect, and check-in and checkout. Accordingly, our goal in this area has also evolved, as you'll see in the next slide. And finally, market value assets, or MVAs, are an important component of RayPEC's portrait of a graduate. These meaningful, real-world experiences enhance student readiness and include internships, industry credentials, client projects, or nine or more college credit hours. Graduating with at least one MVA is not only a key district objective, it will also be a RayPEC graduation requirement for the class of 2027. To that point, it's important to note that counselors have and will continue to regularly meet one-on-one with our district sophomore, junior, and senior students to ensure that they have or are in the process of meeting the MVA requirement. Courses that include client-connected projects are also being added to future course guides, along with the development of communication for students, parents, and guardians within Focus. Over the next two years, the RayPEC School Counseling Department is committed to the goals that you see here, while concurrently working to strengthen the structural foundation of our counseling program as a whole. This includes updating the district's school counseling manual and ensuring alignment with Missouri's model guidance standards. We also plan to review our system of supports by asking the question, are we meeting the needs of our students and families to the very best of our ability? Assessing that complex question will include conducting a time-on-task analysis and using data to examine student outcomes such as achievement, attendance, and behavior. This process will help evaluate program success and guide the development of our next steps. And finally, as proud as we are of our counselors and their incredibly important work, we know there's always room for improvement. RayPEC's counselors are committed to continuing their collaboration with Mrs. Scott and her outstanding MTSS team to respond systemically to student needs through counselor-led, evidence-based tiered support. They will continue emphasizing college and career readiness standards for K through twelve students and increasing the number of graduates with MVAs. And in alignment with RayPEC's strategic plan, they are also committed to evaluating, pursuing a high-quality, social-emotional curriculum for high school students that promote the development of skills necessary for success, not only as graduates and contributing members of the community, but beyond. That does conclude my presentation and I and my colleagues will stand by for questions.
With our tagline of choice happens here for the school district with all of the choices, do you feel that the Counseling Department has the information and the knowledge of everything that is available for us to help the kids choose?
That's an outstanding question. And I really do. I know that they are continuing to emphasize those additional programs that are available and they take that role very, very seriously. They're learning, you know, as we continue to add on additional opportunities for students, they're continuing to learn as well. But I do know that they emphasize those programs with students and with families during back-to-school nights, during meet-the-teacher activities and events, parent-teacher conferences. At the start of the year, they meet with students one-on-one and share those opportunities with those that are ready for that. So I do think that they have a working knowledge of them, but I think that we're continuing to learn how to better spread the good word as well.
Okay, perfect. Because there's a lot.
There's a lot.
And it's all different than how it was when, when we sat in the seats too. So just making sure you guys feel equipped for that.
I really, I think that they are and I think that we're continuing to do a better job of getting that word out there.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you very much.
Well, how much time do you spend counseling parents? I mean, it seems like, you know, a lot of times the kid is all in, but you know, because of the home life, it's, it's tough for them to be all in.
Yeah, I think that that's a really great question. It's kind of a loaded question, but it's a, it's a really great question. And I will say that, you know, we want to work with the student and the family. And I've really seen our counselors do that at all levels, especially at the elementary level. They begin those relationships, building those relationships with the families very early on. And, and then continue those relationships through elementary into middle and then where it gets picked up in high school, where we really are focusing on, okay, we know where you want to be, now how are we going to get you there? That includes the family and involves the family. So I would say it's a shared partnership between home and school and that that communication with the student is kind of equal communication with the parents. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Now on to summer school recap. Dr. Volker, you haven't had the mic for a while.
You know, I was kind of feeling left out.
I know.
Before I start, I do want to kind of echo Dr. Sligle, and I know this isn't about summer school, but the additions to our Academic Services staff, their professionalism and the skills and will and the ability that they bring are incredible. So I, I've been here a long time and I know what great people in, in great positions in a great department can do for our kids. So I appreciate your support and, and what they do. So I know that wasn't about summer school, so I apologize for that. I do, I do, and I don't, I'm not going to give it up, no. Thank you for allowing me to talk about summer school tonight. I really want to talk and thank the staff first. We have hundreds of staff that worked with on a summer school that developed a program that literally has thousands of students. And we roll out and it's like beginning a new school year all over again. So we have staff that start really pretty much next month that will begin planning and organizing and setting up for a summer school program that has over twenty-three hundred students and over a hundred staff and really high-quality learning that takes place. So I want to start with a thank you for all those people and I want to thank our administration and our Board of Education. So we ask a lot of you and you deliver time and time again and allow us to have programs like this summer school that's all-encompassing and provides so much for so many different types of learner. So I thank you for that. So I guess we're going to start with the financials, which is just fine. Some of us like to start with the financials. Looking at that, you can see our revenue and growth in the summer school program. And I'm not going to talk about this for a long time. It's very healthy. Now, we're at the point where our summer school program brings funds and revenues into our school district while at the same time providing amazing opportunities for students. This allows us to continue to think, how can we expand? How can we grow? What can we provide our students? And I know as Dr. Barr and the team, take on, there's Dr. Barr over here, take on the summer school opportunity and grow it as a part of Academic Services, they will be able to do that because we know we're bringing in revenue that's appropriate and we're fiscally sound in our programming. So we'll continue to look at that and what we can do for our students. We're always looking at growth opportunities and summer school is, is an avenue that we can continue to explore new and exciting things for our kids. So we're going to continue to do that. If you could switch back to...
I have a question for you.
Oh, yes, sure.
I noticed that in 2025, we started reporting the special education cost. Have we seen an increase of special education students attending summer school?
I, that's a great question. And I'd have to go back and look exactly at the numbers, so I'm going to give you anecdotal and then check a little bit later to make sure. I haven't seen our summer school special education percentage increase drastically. Like it isn't something that I've noticed and said, we need to increase services. We never just included them. They were always a separate budget line. So they just were never included in the financial report. And I'm talking to Tiffany Banks, she's like, they're, they're summer school staff. We need to include them in the financial report. So no, I haven't anecdotally seen an increase, but I'll go back and check and make sure those numbers are, are correct. Okay, looking at our summer school enrollment, just, we continue to see really solid, a little bit of a decline from, from last year. We'll look at a little bit of why. We see a decline at the middle level. That was probably kind of our biggest drop in that. We changed our middle-level program. I honestly still believe it was probably changed for the better, but it wasn't as long. So it wasn't an all-day program. So I could see that our sixth and seventh grade parents, that you're always weighing that when you think about summer school and sixth and seventh graders. Often you have to find staff as well and you have to keep high-quality programming. And so having middle schoolers there for seven or eight hours really was, we found, wasn't as productive. It might be nice on the parent's side, but we'll have to have that conversation. But still, really good summer school numbers, really good June. June is our in-person. Most of that is an in-person situation. Well, you'll see July with the four thirty-four. That's strictly online. So we had over four hundred students that accessed online material. We had over eighteen hundred credit-bearing courses passed, which means that is a lot. Most of those were half-credit. most of those were half-credit, so we're talking about almost nine hundred credits earned. Think about that, it takes twenty-four credits in Missouri, twenty-six at RayPEC to have a high school diploma. That's a lot of diplomas just wrapped into one summer school. Now, of course, that's not what you do. That's spread across thousands of kids, you know, nine hundred or so as we talk about the high school. But that's still a neat stat when you look at how many credits kids are able to earn summer. And it's through multiple different ways. So we've got our online platforms through Launch and Viper and our staff doing it, and then we have a lot of credit recovery, and then we have students that are taking courses for the first time and earning credit. It's really a great opportunity, whether you're falling behind or trying to get ahead, for students to gain and earn credits. And then just learn some really fun things. So we're going to scroll down and talk about our survey. We send this out every year. Our participation has dipped every year in our survey. We talk about it every year, maybe this is something that Dr. Barr can find a different way to gather this information. And I will tell you, I know you're going to want to see it every year, but the information is very similar every year. Our parents appreciate what our summer school program provides at a very high level. So when you're talking about just looking at fours or fives, eighty-five to ninety percent of our parents score us in the four to five range on a five-point Likert scale. Now, this is enjoyment, if you want to keep scrolling down, we can go through these. This is enjoyment. This is quality of teaching in the summer school program. Our quality of administration in the summer school program shows us the same thing. Educational programming and classes show us the same thing as you go. Effectiveness of safety measures, we started that with COVID, and I kept it as we do our secured entries and our check-in process and using Raptor. Are we still doing those? Those are important things. Are we still doing them in the summer? And I want to ask our parents, are they still seeing those? And they're definitely saying. And then the overall quality of the summer school program. So if you keep scrolling down. And I added some actual comments and trends, I think even Dr. Sligle said, are you sure you want to add actual comments from this? And I said, yes, and this is why. I really liked that you see, this is exactly what they said, if they had a name on there, I removed that. Now, this is not all the comments, but I tried to pull ones that were both positive and themed, kind of chunked together, and then maybe ones that are a little more critical and themed and chunked together. In general, they love the active learning. They love the opportunities to do and be a part of their educational process. They love the STEAM focus and the STEM focus that we have, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, and they like those projects as we go. If you'll notice, there's suggestions, some asked for more advanced notice about enrollment for summer school. You know what that tells me? No matter how much we communicate, we're going to have to keep trying to communicate more, because it seems like we send out so many communications about it's time to enroll, there's still people in very busy lives. So we're going to have to keep using social media and finding other ways to connect. And then there were some about communication, themed, and I just picked one, communication. We've got, we're going to continue to talk to our teachers. The teachers get busy, it's sixteen days at the elementary school. They, parents still want, in fact, what I've noticed, parents want more communication in summer school than they do during the regular school year. That's what I've noticed. That's really challenging to continue to provide that and encourage our staff. Our administrators do newsletters, and they send weekly reports, and we still have folks say they want more. So we're going to have to figure out what that more looks like and how we can provide that. And then the bus service, although I think our bus service did improve. I'm excited to see this summer with Ryan Naylor leading up our bus service. He's done an amazing job for us, another thank you. And I really think, I'm excited to see him take a hold of that and see what this summer's bus service can be as we grow into that. So that is, those are the themes, that's the information, that's the financials. I want to say thank you again. I believe we have an amazing summer school program for our kids. We're just going to keep working to try and make it better. Any questions for me? Yes.
Are we still seeing a number of children that would benefit from summer school that are not taking advantage of the program?
Yeah, I think that's still going to be something that we have to work on. We do encouragements, and some I would call pseudo-required in that, but most of it is highly encouraged. We do see a lot of take advantage, we wish we had more. And then summer school, sometimes students self-select themselves out, meaning that realization is summer school is not a required program. If their behavior is disruptive enough to the learning environment, they're going to be asked not to return. Students at some levels figure that out, and I almost call it self-select out. We don't want that, and we work with them to change behaviors, but it is not a required program, and if they can't behave and they are disrupting the learning process, some are asked not to return. So there's a little bit of balance. We need those that really need it to attend, and we need those that really need it to stay. And those are things I think we'll always continue to work on.
Thank you, Dr. Volker.
Thank you very much.
On to the Cass County Legislative Priorities. Dr. Sligle.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Including your agenda tonight are the Cass County Legislative Priorities. These priorities were developed collaboratively among ten school districts in Cass County. Each Board of Education in the county will review and adopt the same set of legislative priorities. President Johnson and I worked together on these alongside our colleagues in the other districts. Tonight is an introduction of this document for your review. We plan to bring this back to you for formal approval in November, and you may recall seeing a preview of these priorities in your board update just two weeks ago. Be happy to try to answer any questions you might have on any of them. If not, we will enter this into the record as introduction and approve in November.
It's very thorough, there's no questions.
Very good. Thank you.
On to action items with the September 2025 Finance Report.
Yes, we have one action item this evening, the monthly finance report. I want to kind of set the table for Tiffany Banks here. This report contains the same financial data that you've seen in the past. However, we're making a small procedural change tonight. Rather than including it in the consent agenda as was previously, we are moving it to an action item section so that Tiffany can present it to you, and you can ask questions as needed. It's the same report, same data that you've seen in consent, but this approach allows for a little more explanation around our financial picture each month. Tiffany.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to present the September 30th financials to you all this evening. We uploaded the customary monthly financial reports to you all in advance for review, and I'm pleased to share that our first quarter is shaping up very well. Overall, revenues and expenditures are tracking right where we expected, and our fund balances remain healthy. The small shifts we've seen from last year are all within normal patterns for this point in the fiscal year. Our spending continues to reflect purposeful investments in our people, classrooms, and technology, all areas that directly support teaching and learning. In short, we're financially stable, positioned well for the year ahead, and grateful for the continued collaboration that keeps us strong. With that, I respectfully recommend the board to approve the September financial reports as presented.
Are there any questions?
It seems like most of them decreased the amount. I mean, is that the amount we're getting?
Yes. So revenue, revenue was slightly under where we were at this point last year, and expenses were just slightly higher, so...
Reason for that?
Yep, it's very reasonable, very cyclical, normal, all within normal range.
We'll let the board know, historically, we've brought to you in November a budget amendment. We'll be discussing that in our November 13th work session. Paul, to your question, because, you know, we set a budget back in June, and then reality comes to fruition, we shake the tree a little bit, and then Tiffany brings to you, okay, here's where we're really at for the year. We went over it today, I can tell you it's not going to be, as far as our final financial position, too much out of what we were expecting, but there are some movements in there that we'll discuss next in two weeks to give you a very clear picture of where we're headed for the rest of the fiscal year. I'll give you the thirty thousand foot view, I'm not alarmed by it, so.
Thank you, Tiffany.
You're welcome.
Oh, sorry, we need a motion. Gosh, I was so excited to not have a question, but to, we need a motion to approve the September 2025 Finance Report as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you for reminding me. Now on to committee reports. Yesterday, the Audit Committee met. That was yesterday, yes. And went over the audit with timing of where things are. We're going to wait to get the final audit report until December. So we're just, everything is fantastic, waiting just until requirements from, not FERPA, but... Yeah, there's something federal, it's not final, so audit is great. Tiffany and her team got another big thumbs up from her auditor, talked through that. That's why I didn't have any questions today, because I asked a lot of questions yesterday, and so all good there. Anyone else met? Ruth probably has, but she'll give us that next time, so. Okay, on to the Superintendent's Update.
Thank you for my Superintendent's Update tonight. Many of the items that I've shared with you recently are already in the agenda, so I want to point our viewing public to that, that the committee can see the same updates that you receive each week. I do want to highlight one important area of one of those updates was that within our strategic plan was our portrait of a graduate progressions. I know you saw that last week. This has been one of our key action steps for the year. The progressions give us a very clear way to measure how effectively we're developing the competencies and attributes that you see on the wall right there, as defined by our Portrait of a Graduate. The work is progressing well, and I'm very encouraged by where our teams are headed with it. Earlier this week, and I know you saw, I sent out my annual weather message to parents and staff. Good times, huh? It included details about how we intend to communicate during inclement weather events this year, as well as our plans for handling each type of day, from traditional closures to virtual learning options. You will note, we've also added a two-hour delayed start this year. Don't get too excited, because I don't know if we'll use it very often, but at least we'll have it in our arsenal to use it if needed. The work that I have been asked to do on the School Finance State Task Force continues, where I'm focusing with a group of others on local effort calculations and helping develop a new potential model for local effort when it comes to school finance. That work has been engaging and important and fun, and I'll continue to update the board as we progress in that. Also had the opportunity to present at the Missouri School Boards Association Conference last weekend. Tiffany Banks also presented at the conference, and we love seeing RayPEC so well-represented there. I want to say how great it was to see so many of our board members in attendance, thank you for that. Your engagement and presence at those events do not go unnoticed, reflects very well in our district, and I believe we're going to have some time at our work session in a couple of weeks to talk and debrief for those that were there about some questions and other opportunities that they want to pursue and talk about amongst their colleagues. Tomorrow morning is our primetime breakfast. It's an event for our senior citizens in our district to learn more about the great things our students and staffs are doing. As part of that discussion, we'll be presenting the flyer that you have before you, that's this one here, the one created by our communications team, highlighting just how we are providing more life-enhancing choice and opportunities for our students than ever before. We're looking forward to meeting with our senior citizens tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. at the Lead Center. And finally, on a celebratory note, it's been an outstanding fall for RayPEC activities. Our girls' golf team brought home a state championship about a week ago, and today, our girls' softball team won their state semifinal game, and will be playing for a state championship tomorrow morning in Springfield. We will be recognizing both of those groups in our November board meeting. It's been an exciting season across the board. You'll receive a full activities recap in your November update and get to meet some of those student athletes when we recognize them, so very excited about that. I know a couple of us will be headed down to the game tomorrow to support. Dr. Barr will be taking on the Senior Citizens Event at the Lead Center, so we'll be spread out, but doing great work for the school district, so go Panthers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sligle. On to Board of Education comments. You guys are so talkative. Now I know why Ruth likes me to talk all the time. As Dr. Sligle talked, we were at the conference on Friday and Saturday. Ruth was there, I think, all week and had a lot of good things that came out of that from our sessions, and we will bring those in the working, our next working session, bring some of those ideas and sessions that we attended to the board for us to have conversations on maybe some changes. And my other comment would be sunscreen. So make sure you wear sunscreen tomorrow at the game. And with that, we'll talk calendar of events. November 13th work session at 6:00 p.m., November 20th regular meeting, 6:00 p.m. close, 7:00 p.m. open, and with that, we are adjourned.